Good evening and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board Meeting for October 15th, 2018. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have a limited but impactful agenda. Mostly, we're going to be dealing with the review from the Charter Review Committee. Also going to be a discussion with the town moderator about tomorrow night's town meeting and a discussion on the North Interceptor, which has been a -- that's part of our sewer system runs along I-91. So those will be the main topics of discussion tonight that we know about. There'll also be our general discussion, town manager's update, et cetera. Before we get started, I do have a few announcements that I wanted to get started with, and I already alluded to the fact that there is a town meeting tomorrow night. It's Tuesday, October 16th, in Long Meadow High School. It'll be in the auditorium, not the gymnasium, in the auditorium. Begins promptly at 7:00. And we're going to have a discussion with Rebecca Townsend, our town moderator, later this evening, just to review that. Early voting. Early voting for the November election, the statewide and federal election, will begin one week from today, that's October 22nd. We've changed the early voting location. It will be at Greenwood Center, the left side, where the gymnasium part is not the adult center. We've done that to accommodate people because of the construction going on in front of the community house. So again, beginning Monday, October 22nd. It actually runs, I think, 13 or 14 consecutive days, or at least it doesn't run Sundays, but it runs Monday through Saturday next week, one day till 8:00 p.m. Tuesday it's till 8:00 p.m., starts 8:15 every morning. And then the following week as well, Monday through Friday. So again, if you're, for some reason, don't want to fight crowds or aren't going to be around on Election Day, November 6th, please vote early at the community house. Also, continuing discussions on our flu clinics. Flu clinics are held at Greenwood Center. The next scheduled flu clinic is Tuesday, October 23rd. That's a week from tomorrow. And then there's Thursday, the 25th, and then Monday, November 5th, which is at Stores Library. Please check the town website under the Greenwood Center, Adult Center, or the Health Department for information about the flu clinic. There is a Veterans 5K Run Walk on Saturday, November 3rd, from the -- starts at Greenwood Park, and begins 9:00 a.m. registration, 10:00 a.m. is the Veterans Day Ceremony, and 11:00 o'clock, the run begins. Again, it's Saturday, November 3rd, which is before the Select Board meets again, which is why I'm announcing that now. There's a town-sponsored course in self-defense. It's Rad Rape Assessment, Self-Aggression Self-Defense Course that's being taught by our Long Meadow Police Department. It meets Tuesdays and Thursdays for two weeks, so it's four consecutive meetings, 6:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. at Center School. If you're interested in registering, I think it says to email -- there's an email address or call the police department's non-emergency number, (567) 3311. And finally, the DPW will be doing hydrant flushing. That hydrant flushing is -- actually, it's ongoing now. It began last week, and it will continue through this Friday, flushing hydrants 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. So if you notice any discoloration of your water, please run your cold water for a few minutes until it runs clear. For any questions, call the DPW, (567) 3400. Those are the announcements I had. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Steven?
Yeah, Mark. William Street is going to be closed starting tomorrow, probably through the end of the week. But it's closed at Red Fern, but that's just through traffic. Really, the work is being done up just past Deep Woods, almost by Kinder Care. So even if you access Kinder Care through William Street, you'll still be able to get into their driveway. It's just that there's a cut in the road that's being made across William Street, like I said, right there, close to Dwight Road. There really is not a great viable detour in that area, so we're detouring by Red Fern and Frank Smith. But if you have a game at Turner Park or something like that, you'll be able to access it by going up William Street. You just can't get all the way through to Dwight. People, any questions, they can call my office or the DPW.
Great. Any other announcements? Great. As we do every meeting, I'd call for any residents' comments. We've got a little crowd here. Does anybody have any comments? Please. Just please introduce yourself, and the microphones for the TV, not necessarily for the room.
I am Margaret Cohn. I am here as the Chair of the Long Meadow Historical Society Commission, rather, to the members of the Select Board of Long Meadow and Mr. Stephen Crane, Town Manager. Dear Sirs and Madam, the Massachusetts Historical Commission has chartered the Long Meadow Historical Commission with, and I quote, "Planning and implementing programs for the identification, evaluation, and protection of our community's historic resources," unquote. In keeping with that charter, we published the resource titled, "Areas of Historical Significance in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, Revised October of 2017." And I have copies for everyone. Everyone here, not there. Approximately one year ago, Mrs. Cohn -- that would be me -- Chair of the Historical Commission handed copies of this document to members of the planning board, and the document was uploaded to the town website. Over the past couple of months, it has been brought to our attention that some infrastructure projects have been started in particular areas of historical significance without notice to either the Historical Commission or the residents of those areas. In particular, the repaving project in Colony Acres, which is much more than repaving, and the proposed work on the north end of Long Meadow Street. We understand that the DPW finally met with the residents of Colony Acres to review the plans, but the agreed-upon changes were never communicated to Palmer Paving, and they proceeded with the original plan, which is very disruptive to the original Olmsted design of curvilinear roads. While the physical work on the north end of Long Meadow Street has not started yet, we advise you that the Long Meadow Street North Historic District is on the National Register of Historic Places and therefore requires additional review by interested entities, such as the Historical Commission. We are asking the Select Board to advise the respective departments of the town to consult our publication and include the Historical Commission in the planning process. Our history is important to the character and economic well-being of Long Meadow. We have been blessed with citizens who choose to live in homes of historical significance and take on the responsibility of maintaining their properties to certain standards. We have supported their efforts by creating historic districts of local, state, and national importance, which entitle them to protections from intrusions by poorly informed or misguided entities, such as paving projects. We believe the Select Board supports these protections and will ensure that the concerned citizens of any area so affected will be listened to and respected, and appropriate reviews will take place. As always, the Long Meadow Historical Commission continues in its role as an advisory board to all town bodies to identify, preserve, and educate the town about its unique historical heritage. Respectfully, the Long Meadow Historical Commission, Margaret Cohn, Chair, Tim Casey, Barbara Fitzgerald, Beth Hoff, David Marinelli, Jeff Spear, and Steve Weiss. And I have copies for you, because I don't think you actually got any candy too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cohn. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Ms. Roganis?
I'm Mary Roganis, and I was hoping that tonight I would get an easy detour into East Long Meadow. But I guess that's not to be -- you mentioned Red Fern. You can't use Red Fern, can you?
Yeah, the detour is, if you're going east on Williams, you ought to turn left on Red Fern, out to Converse, and then right on Converse, all the way back up to Dwight, and then come back that way. You've got to go around.
Not an easy way to get to East Long Meadow. Okay, thank you. I'm Mary Roganis, 22, Warren Terrace, and I'm here tonight to talk about the Charter Review Committee report that you will be receiving later this evening, as I understand it. The public library. Stores Library is a public charitable trust. It was incorporated over a century ago specifically for the purpose of maintaining a library for the benefit of our town's inhabitants. And our board is solemnly bound to act in a manner consistent with that corporate purpose. The Review Committee's proposed charter revision relative to Stores seeks to strip the trustees of any meaningful management authority over the library. The same is true of Town Council's currently proposed amended and restated operating agreement, which the town manager erroneously claims is required based on the existing 2004 charter. Both of these proposals would make it impossible for the trustees to maintain the library, thereby totally gutting and destroying the corporate purpose of the library board. The trustees have a fiduciary obligation not to concur with such a result. Please note that as a public charitable trust, Stores is subject by statute to the oversight of the Attorney General's Office. As you know, charter amendments proposed today would need to be approved by that office. Any amendment that could frustrate the trustees' abilities to fulfill their corporate purpose is likely to be carefully scrutinized by that office, and the trustees would have a fiduciary obligation to flag this issue for the Attorney General's Public Charities Division. In any event, Massachusetts law provides a statutory mechanism specifically for the management of public libraries. Nothing in the statute permits Long Meadow to vest the town manager with authority to directly control the affairs of the library. In 1990, our then-board president signed a deed transferring ownership of the library building and additional real estate from Stores to the town. The goal was to facilitate a library expansion project. Town council at the time, who was also sitting on our board, expressly assured trustees that the transfer was just a technicality. He said nothing would change. The 1990 operating agreement, which charged our board with continuing management of the library, was presented to the trustees as assuring their continuing prerogatives. Same individual has now chaired the Review Committee that is presenting these proposed revisions to you. I want to stress that the trustees are eager to work with the town to ensure everyone's needs are met. We respectfully urge the Select Board to reflect on the history and to refrain from any action that would improperly divest us of our ability to exercise our obligations under the trust.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from residents?
Would it be appropriate for me to be heard on this matter?
You've got an agenda item, unless it's something more different from what you're going to be talking about.
Well, I just wanted to clear the air, since I was referred to not by name, but by--
Dave, why don't you come up, because nobody at home can hear the word you're saying, but--
Well, and I know they'll want to. I was town council at the time of the transaction that Mrs. Roganis referred to, and the library expansion project was financed by municipal bonds. And in order for the project to go forward, the town had to own the property that was being improved with funds from municipal bonds. And for that reason, ownership of the library building was deeded to the town. And at the same time, the town entered into the operating agreement to describe the relative responsibilities of the town versus the library trustees. So that's the background to the operating agreement and the transfer of the property. And I, you know, I was on the -- I represented the town. I was -- happened to be on the library board at that time. There was full disclosure of my two hats, and no one had any problem with it. It was something that had to be done if the expansion was going to go forward.
We discussed that prior, but we'll talk about it potentially when this charter review comes back up. Are there any other public comments, please? Just your name and address.
Good evening. Sarah Tizza, 131 Maple Road. I am a member of the Stores Library Board of Trustees, and I just wanted to back up Mary Roganis's comments, and I would just urge the Select Board to review very carefully the statutes as well as the original trust documents before making any decisions regarding changes to how the Stores Board of Trustees operates. There are some legalities in there that I don't think are being considered, and I do think that it really needs to be revisited before any final decisions are made. So I would just ask that those two areas in particular, the Massachusetts State statutes and the original trust documents, that give the Board of Trustees the authority that it's had all these years, be reviewed very, very carefully before changes are made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
So my name is Karen Demarche, and I'm a resident of Long Meadow, as well as a small business owner in town. I own Karen &amp; Company up at the Long Meadow Shops. I am here in reference to Article 11, the effective date of the prohibition on the single-use plastic bags. I am full support of the prohibition of the bags, but I feel as a small business owner, more than six months is needed to the hardship waiver. I feel more time is needed to transition out from what many of us are using, currently using, the bags we're using. I have a significant investment in the current bags, and I'm looking to avoid any additional financial stress in what is currently a challenging business environment for small businesses like myself. I feel more than six months is needed to work through the issues, as well as researching and purchasing new bags that will need to comply. There are already many challenges and hurdles of owning a brick-and-mortar small business retail store, and I am just looking to avoid any additional undue economic hardships that would come from a previous investment in bag supplies. I know I am speaking for some of the other small businesses in town as well, and I hope you will take this all into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Demarche. I would -- my only response would be, and we're not going to discuss this, but there's a town meeting tomorrow. The item is on the warrant, and I recommend that you also give that same presentation at town meeting if you so desire, because at this point, the Select Board can't do anything about it. It's on the warrant, and it's up to the town residents to vote yes or no. So at least as it is on the warrant. Any other comments from residents? Are there any Select Board comments? No? No Select Board comments? Fine. Steven, do you have a town manager's report?
Sure. So I did briefly mention William Street. I just wanted to clarify the local traffic option, the local traffic exclusion to the detour. So this week, like I said, William Street's going to be closed. We realize it's going to be a difficult adjustment for people, but unfortunately, there's some infrastructure work that has to happen below grade that needs to happen for the project to be completed. Once that work is done, we think the paving will happen next week. Obviously, that's somewhat weather-dependent. Mostly, you can't pave in the rain. And then, once the paving is done, it'll be, I think, a lot better out there. And then, we will be doing curbing in sidewalks into November, and we will be doing kind of a temporary pavement marking plan. It'll essentially be painted in lane assignments that were there before the work started. This is because the traffic signal equipment, specifically the mast arms, are on back order, and they won't be installed till the springtime. Once those are here, we will, in the springtime, we'll install the signals and paint the road for the new configuration, and we'll have it all done. And I think people notice a dramatic improvement in traffic in that area compared to what used to be. If you haven't been out there, the sidewalks are nearly complete all the way through the project area. And so I think by the time, hopefully by Thanksgiving, you can walk off your turkey dinner by going on sidewalk from Long Meadow Street at Williams all the way down to Dwight to Converse, back down, and an entire loop, completely on sidewalk the whole way. That'd be the first time ever that you'd be able to do that. Or you could take your bike down Converse onto Dwight Road. DPW project, I know we're still on kind of a -- we're in kind of a holding pattern. We are waiting on for some information from the Department of Environmental Protection from the state. I did hear from them today that they are awaiting some sampling results and will be getting back to us with what they think our alternatives are. As soon as I have updates, I'll let the board know. Mark, you mentioned voting. Still my thunder on that one. The Adult Center Design Committee had a kickoff meeting with the architect and the OPM and our design committee. And I think the program is pretty well-developed based on our conversation. I think the architect has a clear sense of what the building needs are and what the, you know, proper spatial assignment should be, so I think the design will come together fairly quickly. As you may know, back in July, we had, when we got like three inches of rain and an hour or so, there was flooding all over town, but the basement of the community house where we have some offices, or the garden level of the community house where we have some offices, experienced some flooding. And so those folks were displaced for, some for a few weeks, some for a few months, but just about everybody's ready to get back. And I think our purchasing director's the last person, and he's just waiting on new office furniture, because his old stuff was particleboard stuff that absorbed all the water and started to disintegrate. That has prompted a larger conversation about office assignments and locations, and so we may end up, we're meeting, I think, Thursday, to talk to people about, should we reassign some rooms? And we do, as you may know, the Health Department and the Building Department now share an administrative assistant, which was a great efficiency from what we had before. Does it make sense to have their offices closer together so they get the truly efficient benefit from sharing a person? So these are the types of things we're talking about, but just stay tuned for potentially office moves. The only thing I want to say is, we do have a great team of employees, and the employees that were impacted by this really took it all in stride, moved to temporary, highly temporary office spaces, and continued right along with their work, with really minimal disruption to their performance or their output. And I just want to commend all of them for that. And most, if not all of them, work for Paul, so I also want to commend his stewardship of that situation for his departments. It's not an easy situation, and as I note somewhat sarcastically in my report, probably wouldn't have gone as smoothly if it was my office that had flooded. So I did note that I was asked by the ERC5, I've been to a few of their events, and they asked if the town would join, and I decided to try a one-year membership to the East of the River Chamber of Commerce to get access to some of their information and seminars on the regional economy and economic forces that are impacting businesses in this area. I've been involved in chambers of commerce in every municipality that I've worked in, and I found that that access really helps us as town government get a sense of what's really happening, you know, where the rubber hits the road for the local economy and the regional economy. So hopefully, I'll have some good information. I'll be able to glean from that membership. And if it doesn't turn out to be all that great, then, you know, we won't rejoin, but I thought I'd give that a try. As I know, it's not directly related to the Tax Sealing Task Force, but, you know, our property values are tied to the viability of economic activity in this region, and I thought I'd get a sense of how that looks, like I said, at the small business level. And I've been working with myself, Paul, Superintendent Shea, and Assistant Superintendent Maza, and Director Maza have been working together on exploring the idea of using the Accelerated Repair Program, which is offered by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And when people hear MSBA, they normally think, you know, new school, but they also have programs that pay essentially a similar reimbursement rate for boilers, and boilers, roofs, windows, and doors, those four items specifically. And so knowing that we have some projects that fit that description coming up, we decided to have a conference call with them and learn more about it. The trick is, they have pretty strict age limits. Doesn't that -- if you have a failing boiler that's 20 years old, you won't be eligible if the minimum age they set for that year is 25. And so, you know, I mentioned the Burnham boilers that are all quitting before their scheduled end of life. You know, they would not necessarily be eligible. So the program is definitely a worthwhile effort, and you have to put in an SOI per building. So for example, if a school needed a boiler and a roof and/or windows and doors, it would make sense to do one SOI for all of those items. So that's something we're looking at. There was nothing ready right now for the pursuit of this, but we will continue to look at what our assets are, what's going to be need replacement, and when we're going to hit certain eligibility thresholds. And then you have the monthly reports of the departments in the packet as well.
Anybody have any questions for the town manager? Marie?
The one item, you talked, you talked about the Adult Center Design, and you mentioned here a goal of bidding the project in the spring of 2019, and I'm hoping that you're going to push that to February. If we can get the bid ready, then we'd be eligible to file for that grant that's due the beginning of March. So just keep that little goal in mind.
Yeah, I ended up having to cancel the meeting with Representative Ash's office to talk about the grant, but I did see her at the Public Safety Event, and we will reschedule that and have that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Steven. We're going to move to our next agenda item, which is a discussion with our town moderator. Ms. Townsend, if you don't mind stepping forward, we're just going to, I suspect, at some point, somewhat review the warrant with you, but go right ahead and let us know what you have in mind.
Oh, well, good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I look forward to seeing everyone in the auditorium tomorrow. The warrant, as you know, has 11 items on it. Two items require a two-thirds majority to pass, and two items require a nine-tenths majority to pass. New tomorrow evening will be the first use of the electronic pole pads. We had pilot-tested them, as you know, at a previous town meeting. The town clerk was very happy with how they worked and asked me to convey the town to the town appreciation for purchasing the pole pads. And those will allow voters to register, check in with ease. They can go to any line. If they would like to show their ID, they could, but they don't have to show their ID to do so. Also tomorrow, what will be new is the eighth graders from Williams Middle School have asked to be in attendance as visitors in a special visitor section. Mr. Will Sullivan, the social studies teacher, is working with the students to help them to get to understand what local government is like in Long Meadow. And so they will be there as visitors, not as speakers. They may, before a meeting, seek to interview participants to learn what it's like to be a member of the local legislature. Other than that, the only other issue that I wanted to make sure I mentioned is that on Article 11, because a family member was involved in researching some of the material to develop that, the, I will be stepping down from moderating that particular article, any motion under that article, and the town clerk will hold an election to-- any motion under that article. And the town clerk will hold an election to have a temporary moderator for any motion under Article 11. I invite your questions, if you have any.
I'm going to start out by saying at least Article 11 is fairly lengthy in terms of its content as a bylaw. Are you going to approve the waiving of the reading of that? Or would you prefer that it, I mean, it's only one of 11 articles. Would you prefer it be read in its entirety?
Again, I won't be moderating that section. However, as I have done in the past for other lengthy articles, it's common to make a motion to move in terms of the question, move in terms of the article if there's no change in that article. And whoever the substitute moderator is will have that discretion to accept that motion or not. I don't imagine there would be any trouble. But I really can't stay on that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I just have one comment. On Article 2, the amount will change. We've added $112 to a $437 article. We just want to make sure that people are aware that the motion is going to be different from how the article was written in the warrant.
Right. And I've already pre-approved that motion so that it would be completely fine to offer a substitute motion instead of the particular item, the article amount that's written.
Okay. Marie?
And any amendments you would prefer to have given to you before the meeting in written form or at the meeting?
Certainly, they must be in written form at the meeting. If somebody anticipates any kind of procedural maneuver or any kind of amendment, if it's possible to get it to be beforehand, I can usually work with people to say, yes, I would approve this, or no, I would reject it, and help them to understand beforehand. And that saves time at the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Rebecca, we have two bills that, one of them, they're prior, prior bills that were paying, prior years' bills that were paying nine-tenths vote required. Is it your policy that unless it's clearly unanimous, you're going to ask for a count, or you're going to take this kind of under advisement and see how bad it?
Yeah. I mean, nine-tenths is really hard to visually determine. But if I see no hands rising for one or the other, then that makes the job a whole lot easier.
Talking about a total of $400 bucks, but you never know. Okay. That's the only...
You remind people about how long a hand count takes before you call for the nine-tenths vote, in case there's somebody who's on the fence about it.
Whether they pay the extra $112 for the old last year's bill. Yeah, okay. No other comments? Look forward to seeing you tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you very much. Next, next item of business on our, on our agenda is a review by the Charter Review Committee, a presentation by the Charter Review Committee. I invite up Dave Martell, who's the, was the chair of the Charter Review Committee. Dave, if there's other members of your committee who you want to have come up to the...
Sure.
I'll tell them to come.
Good. Michael Clark is the vice chair. And other members who are here are Lee Miller, Liz Bone, Larry Starr...
Pete Landon.
And Peter Landon. And I can hand you now the...
Thank you.
Jackie, it's very nice to see you.
I'll just make a few comments. I know you've got a heavy agenda, and my, I hope everyone...
This is the main item, Dave, so...
Okay. I hope everyone has had a chance to look at the final report of the Charter Committee, Charter Review Committee. And I'd like to thank the select board for appointing a strong committee, which, in its wisdom, elected me chair. But it's been a good group to work with. We've had spirited discussions. We met about 20 times over the last year, and our final work product is reflected in the report which I just handed to you. We invited all town departments and committee chairs to meet with us. We heard from the moderator. We heard from the school superintendent and the assistant superintendent, the chairs of the finance committee, capital planning committee, the building committee. And they all either appeared in person or gave their written comments. And I would like to thank the participation of Mr. Crane and Mr. Pasturzik, who came to most of our meetings and were very valuable contributors. So none of these, the changes which we're suggesting involve the, a change in the mode of election or terms of office or appointment of the Board of Select or Town Manager. So that none of, none of the changes that we're suggesting would require the appointment of, or election of a charter commission. And I'd simply note that the consensus of the review committee was that the present charter has provided an effective functioning framework for governance of the town for 14 years. And the review committee concluded, however, that experience had shown that in certain limited respects, the charter could be made more effective with appropriate revisions. And those are the ones that we make in our report. Our, our changes are basically fall into two categories. First, there were changes on non-financial matters. Most of these, I think you can see by looking at the report, were editorial and technical in nature. Some of the changes in that category that I would bring to your attention, we're recommending that a change be made so that the removal of the Town Manager would require four out of five select board members rather than a majority. And the same would be for the school superintendent. And reappointment of the Town Manager would take three out of five. Note that we, in the Town Manager's duties section, we have proposed some additional duties, which have, over the years, come up as being appropriate for the Town Manager. For example, the Town Manager's ability to accept and administer grants, the ability of the Town Manager to appoint the assistant assessor, and some issues along those lines. And the chapter, the section which I think Mrs. Roganis might have been hearkening to is a change that we made, that we're proposing to make, to Section 5-2B of the Charter, which simply states that all employees of the town, other than those who come under the jurisdiction of the school committee and the superintendent of schools, as provided by the Constitution and general laws of the Commonwealth, or who are appointed by officers of the Commonwealth, or appointed by the select board, are subject to jurisdiction of the Town, of the Town Manager. That library, people who work at the library are town employees. And we felt it was important that it be, that it be clear that people in the same position as employees, workers at the library, come under the jurisdiction of the Town Manager. It's not in any way meant to diminish the responsibility of the library board to operate the library. There's a detailed operating agreement that spells all of that out. And I understand that there are discussions now underway between Mr. Crane and counsel, his counsel, and the library trustees over what that operating agreement might be, might be changed to look like. As for the financial matters that we're proposing to be changed in the, in the Charter, Section 7-3 has to do with the sequence of events for consideration of the annual town budget. The, the Town Manager now would give his proposed budget to the finance committee at the same time that he gives it to the select board. We heard from the finance committee, and one procedural step that got in the way of full deliberation by the finance committee was they're having to wait until the select board had, had had its shot at the budget before it went to the finance committee to look at and to make recommendations to be printed with the, with the warrant. So now, the finance committee would get the, the proposed budget at the same time that you folks got it. So their deliberations could be, begin that much sooner. Then, we had the matters of the relationship and of the finance committee, the capital planning committee, and the permanent town building committee. This is a matter of considerable debate, including participation by the, by the committees themselves, as to whether they should be continued to kept, be kept separate. Should the finance committee be merged with capital planning? Should capital planning be part of the building committee? And ultimately, after hearing from everybody concerned, we decided that they should be kept separate, but that their duties and composition should be made clear in the Charter. So what we did was we formalized in the Charter, because we figured that a committee of the importance of the town, permanent town building committee should be in the Charter. It was created by your vote last year, I believe. So now, we have carried over into the Charter the directives that were in your vote when you created that panel. And we have kept the capital planning and the finance committees separate, as they are now. The capital planning committee, as it was described in the Charter, we felt was weak on a description of its members. And we felt that, like the capital planning, or the permanent town building committee, you should seek people with certain technical expertise, whether it be architecture, finance, so that we had meaningful members of that committee to, you know, deliberate the capital planning projects. And the essential duties of the capital planning committee continue in the proposed new Charter. The permanent town building committee, as I mentioned, simply carries over the charge that was issued to it by the select board when you created it. I should say that the, the audit committee was a source of some extremely spirited debate. There was considerable sentiment, I should say, on the Charter Review Committee to, to delete the requirement of having an audit committee at all, and to give a mandate to the town's independent auders. As more or less a compromise, we decided to have the audit committee continue with the same directive that it has now, but to make it clear that it was essentially, I'm looking for the exact words. What is it?
It's still in seven?
2-1.
2-1.
Bear with me. 2-13.
There you go.
No, but that's, this isn't the one. This is another section.
Right.
Well, that, that the audit committee would, would continue, but it would have its limitations clearly delineated in, in the Charter. And that's, that's, that was essentially the compromise that we reached, rather than have the audit committee either stay the way it is now, or, or should be dropped altogether.
Mr. Martell, if I just could interrupt you for one second. I just think people ought to know that there, as you said, there was a, that was a subject of spirited debate, I guess, were your words. And, and I know that there was a minority report issued. I'm going to try to give Mr. Landon a chance to speak at the end of this so that he can offer his opinions on the minority side of that. Go ahead. Sorry.
So that's really, you know, the, the premise for the, for the Charter Committee's work was that, at the end of the day, we felt that the Charter was an effective functioning document for, for town government. It had worked for 14 years. It wasn't perfect, and that hopefully, the changes we suggest will make it better. And that, that is my, those are my remarks. Mr. Landon can speak for himself. I think a number of the things that he has in his minority report were actually considered by the Charter Committee, which in its wisdom chose not to incorporate into the changes which it suggested. But he can speak for himself as to...
I have, I have about 12 questions here. But before I get started, unless anybody else wants me to get started, Marie, I'll give you one or two, and I'll take 10 out of 12. Go ahead.
You didn't deal with town meeting itself, the legislative part at all?
No.
And the reason you didn't go into that?
Well, the reason being that we felt that the town meeting was, was working, so that there was no need to consider some other form of town government.
No, I'm talking about the little details, like it has to be on a certain night and day, and those type of...
Those are matters that are in a town bylaw, which would be a change, could be changed at a town meeting. It's not in the Charter.
I thought it was in the Charter.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And also, what's in the Charter is our appointment required, or is that bylaws too, that we have to wait three weeks to, or two meetings before we can go?
Well, we did, we did, we did make a change as to the effective date of appointment of, by the Town Manager. And the concept was that sometimes, I think the Charter now says that it's effective when it's approved by the Board of Selectmen, or if, within two weeks, if it's not, if you don't take it yet.
Dave, you're talking about appointment approval of department heads. She's talking about committees, that whole thing about committees that have to be, and that's all bylaws.
I think that's bylaw, also.
That's all bylaws. So that's...
Because we probably would have had a spirited debate on that as well.
Yeah. So, okay. We all set, Marie? Go ahead, Richard.
I only have really one big question without reviewing the document. I understand you, you did a fantastic job on interviewing a lot of people. I wonder, why didn't you interview the select board?
I, I think we, we had an open invitation to you folks.
No, no, I've never seen it.
Really?
I've asked the question several times, since we're the only ones that really deal with this on a daily basis. This is our operations manual. Did anybody else here get an invitation?
I don't remember.
No. No, I think you'd remembered if you got one. So I just wondered. I, it just seems odd.
Well, no, it was certainly not intentional. But I thought that when we issued the invitation to have all town boards appear before us, that...
Well, I think it would have been appropriate to identify the select board members and send them an email telling them. And I have no record of that.
Okay. Well, I'll take full responsibility for your not having gotten that. But I thought that we had a invitation to the, an outstanding invitation to the select board to, to join us. And...
It may sound a little cursed, but wouldn't it, wouldn't it appear odd to your committee that nobody showed up from the select board, since we're the ones that actually use this as an operational document daily?
I mean, to the, to the extent that...
You wouldn't have thought that was odd, if you've ever been on the select board? That's, that's not the select board.
You want to bail me out here, Mike?
I'll do my best. Well, I will, I'll concur with, with David that certainly, there was never an intention to not include the select board. And I think, you know, maybe it was a bad assumption on my part and on our parts. But I think we all sort of assumed, because the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager were regular participants in our deliberations, that they were there partially representing your interests as well.
Now, you, you've got to be kidding me, Michael. That was, that's what you felt?
I felt that they, they had represented your interests well.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Michael. I appreciate it. This conversation's not going anywhere, Mark. So I'll have to lend it back to you.
So I'm just going to go through my questions for Dave, Dave, for you. And first of all, I'll start with the kind of the narrow ones. The things that weren't in here that I kind of thought we were going to be dealing with is the issue of merging the accounting departments. And one issue that's always come up is the school has their separate accounting department, and the Charter clearly called for them being merged, and it's never merged. And that wasn't addressed. I didn't see anything in here about reiterating that comment or that need. I don't know if you, you understand what I'm, what I'm mentioning, but...
I, I know what you're talking about. But I think when we, the assistant superintendent appeared before us, he thought that the relationship between the school department... appeared before us, he thought that the relationship between the school department and the Mr. Pasturzic's office, that that relationship was working well.
And I'm not arguing whether it's working, but it's in violation of the charter.
So...
I mean, we're not following the charter. And so either we change the charter to match what we're doing, or we do what the charter says. But to maintain a system where we're just blatantly saying, and we have the opportunity to change them, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, to make that...to not make that change says we're choosing to perpetuate discord, or, you know, disagreement between the charter and actual practice. And so I'm in no way indicating whether it's working or not. All I'm indicating is it's not in accordance with the...in compliance with the charter. And I would have thought we would...that's why I expected to see something, say, we wanted to go back to the way it actually is, or, you know... And so my read, I guess, is that everybody thinks it should be the way the charter says it should be. And part of what I'm taking forward is we redouble our efforts to the school committee and tell them, "Look, this is the way the charter says it, and this is what the charter review committee didn't see a reason to change it, and so let's get..." Anyway, that's a...
Well, Mark, did you refer to the specific language you're talking about in the charter?
You know, it was the...Larry, nobody can hear you, but it was the merger that all finance departments...and I'm sitting here with the old charter, okay, which I dumbly walked around with. But somewhere in here, and I don't know where it is, but I know it says that there shall be a single finance department under the CFO, including the school department finances.
That is accurate. And I think when I had interviewed, or the last time that I appeared before this board, you and I had had a very similar conversation.
Right.
And going back to when I was chairing the school committee, we had been approached by the audit committee on that particular question, and it was determined by their counsel at the time, or our counsel at the time, that it was perfectly legal.
Right. Michael, we're not going to get in this discussion tonight, because it's not appropriate.
No, I agree.
Because that was a school department, school committee's attorney, who's ruling that the way the school committee wants it is right. The charter says one thing.
Right.
And my only question tonight was, you know, everybody recognizes we're not doing what the charter says. Whether it's right or wrong, whether the school attorney says it's right or wrong, we're not doing what the charter says. Are we going to change the charter? Are we going to change our practice? That was my only question tonight. And the answer is, we didn't address it. So it's a gap. That's all I'm looking to say.
It might well be a gap, but in defense of the committee, that's not a matter that was brought up.
And I hear you, and maybe it's because, as Mr. Foster said, the people who really care about it didn't get in.
In fact, I think it may be an opinion that I wrote early on with the charter that essentially talked about the way the finances as between the school committee and the school department and the rest of the town should operate, and that having it all operate under the Mr. Pasturzic's office was appropriate. I don't think it got me a lot of votes from the school committee, but that's what I concluded.
Okay. That's fine. I'm really not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to point out that there's a discrepancy. The budget, and you referred to this a little bit in your discussions about the budget process. One of the concerns I had about the way that you're describing the budget to happen, which is, right now, though, my understanding, well, the way we do it, is that the budget goes from the town manager to the select board. We hold a public hearing, and then the select board does its thing, whatever it happens to be. And then it goes to the finance committee, who either votes up and down. What you're proposing is that it go from the town manager to the select board and finance committee at the same time.
Correct.
Is there any...was there any concern expressed, and by the way, the finance committee, my understanding is that they would run a public hearing at some point. That's the way I read this.
Correct.
And so was there any concern, though, that we'd end up with parallel paths with two separate proposals that before it gets to the town meeting, as opposed to it all has to go through one select board, and then the finance committee's either on up or down? Was that any concern at all, that we end up now with, if you will, the finance committee who gets a chance to modify the budget?
Correct.
And a select board who gets a chance to modify the budget, and not until the select board's done their thing, and then the finance committee feeds back what they've changed, what they recommend, after the select board's already done their thing?
The finance committee holds a hearing, and they are the ones who append their comments to the town meeting warrant on the budget, various money articles that are in the warrant. I don't think that they have any veto power over the budget itself.
Right. My only point is that the budget that they're commenting on and getting public comment on may not be the budget that the select board chooses to send to town meeting. And so they're commenting, recommending, if you will, on some variant. And it's likely to be the points of contention that they go off one way, and the select board goes off another way, I guess.
My interpretation of what...it was Maury that came. Their sense was that they would prefer to...they want to be able to track that information, and that they feel like they haven't had a chance to even sort of get acquainted with the budget until the select board's made modifications. But as you can see in the document, we haven't made any changes to the process in which the budget takes form, that ultimately the select board still delivers that budget to town meeting.
Right. But my only concern is that the budget that the finance committee ultimately recommends about to town meeting may be different from the budget that gets through the select board. That was my only comment.
Don't you think that it would more time to talk?
I don't think that was our belief. My belief was that it would give them more time to work on what ultimately is your budget.
And to see the changes that the select board would make.
And to see the changes earlier, that it would not be...
Okay, well, that's fine. That's not...I was just looking at it as things happening and...
It's a good feedback. I appreciate that.
You know, and anyway, I was just looking at it differently, that it was ended up being two separate budgets. Another question I have, you talked about the removal of the town manager. Obviously, that change was made for some reason. I was just wondering why. And is that any different from a non-contract renewal, having been in that position in the past?
That was a meeting I brought a cooler full of beers to.
No, no, no. And it's a serious issue, because...
It was the committee's sense that removal of the town manager was such a serious act that it ought to require more than a simple majority. There's nothing more to it than that.
I absolutely agree with you, but I want to make sure that you saw differentiation between that and the just the non-renewal of the contract.
Yes, we did.
Because it doesn't speak to it. That's fine.
We also wanted to create parity with the vote required to appoint. That was the other thing.
That's fine. I've been there, done that.
But didn't you change the rotation? You went four to fire, three to hire?
No.
No.
I thought I heard you were saying three to hire.
Three to renew. And once he's already been hired.
Three to renew. Why not four to renew? I mean, what's the difference?
I mean, that's a good question.
You went super majority on two items. Why not all of them?
Well, we didn't feel that it was appropriate to have the strictest standard simply to renew his contract when we...
But that's a termination if we don't renew his contract.
Well, then I guess you could terminate him.
No, it's a three to higher.
Well, okay. Theoretically, he doesn't have a job.
But there's a big...
But you had four for termination, and a non-renewal of a contract results in termination.
I could just add, you know, these are simply our recommendations, and, you know, we leave it to you to do what you think is right.
And you've come before the board to answer our questions, since you chose not to have us come before you. Okay?
Okay.
If I may, and again, all kidding aside, they did ask about...this is something that the committee, I believe, you know, wanted to know about on their own, so they asked me what would be...how would this play out? I think the board needs to remember is that on the standard town manager contract, whether it's mine or the one that Robin had, there are certain things that are triggered by certain actions. And so renewal or non-renewal is something that happens at a specific time, and if it doesn't, then the contract is automatically renewed. Termination is something entirely different, and then there's cause or not for cause, and if it's not for cause, then there's severance, and there's all kinds of stuff. So I think part of the weight of the decision-making was tied to the consequences that are triggered by virtue of the contract. So I just want to remind the board of that.
Thanks. I just...one of the...I just want to ask a question again about the audit committee, only because I guess I have a concern about who deals with the outside auditor if the issue is management without an audit committee. That's always been my understanding of the role of an independent audit committee. Absent the select board doing it, and I guess the thought is, select board's doing a lot of other things, but if, you know, I'm looking at, and this is present company excluded, we think we've got a great CFO now, and everything's working well, but, you know, there could be a situation where the problem is management, and if you take out the audit committee, who deals with...between the auditor and the town if the problem is management? And that's one...and I'm not asking you to answer the question. It's kind of a rhetorical question. It's more, I think that's one of the reasons I'd be one of those people who tends to support an audit committee.
Well, the audit committee is still in there.
Who deals...right. But there was some concern about it. It was, we would have replaced them except for...and I think that there's a role there that's, you know, one out of 50 years, or 80 years, or 100 years, but if the, you know... And that's why at every audit, the first thing I ask the auditors, have you had a chance to talk to the audit committee without the presence of the professional staff there? I think it's important. So just my point in the audit committee supporting the...
We agreed with you, actually, and the majority of our discussion revolved around, rather than full out eliminating an audit review function in the charter, was rather merging it with other committees, like the finance committee, which provided independent financial oversight. And ultimately, we decided that a standalone audit committee was probably the most desirable, albeit a little bit more confined in their role than currently stated.
I think an audit committee would come directly to the select board, because you folks are going to have more power as far as any happenings than the audit committee would.
Absolutely, Paul. I guess my concern would be if there were not to be an audit committee, who would, you know, maybe the auditor would come directly to the select board. Okay. Just a quick comment about, a question about the town building committee. We've been, and I skipped over this agenda item, but we're going back to it, the issue of change order and authority of the town building committee. Your comments about the authority of the town building committee were fairly, I think, staid and minimal, talking about review new construction, but it doesn't say...I mean, we've given the town building committees really the authority to oversee more than just review new construction, kind of watch new construction. I'm just wondering if that might be something we want to consider.
We, very honestly, we just carried over to the charter your charge to the town building committee when you created it.
So if we saw a fit to somehow expand it, we could...you wouldn't be opposed to us carrying that over again?
And now is the time.
Right.
Based on our discussions, we would think that that would be a bylaw.
Yeah.
That would not be a charter, right?
A lot of our discussion...
The specifics, if you're talking about.
Okay. That's fine.
A lot of our discussion on, frankly, the entire charter document really revolved around what was a matter for select board to develop policy, and what was a matter that should be included in the charter. And we felt that a lot of these things could have been decided or can be decided in the future based on select board policy or bylaw.
Okay. That's fine. The capital plan, capital planning committee, you had some discussions about that and some, a lot of reviews of that. And I guess one of the things that has come up recently that I, you know, is timing and how they...and when they pull off their...what it is they do. Do you see that as anything as part of this charter of the capital planning committee, of the timing? Because we've gotten into, do we do it once a year, twice a year? Do they have to get the capital plan by October? Is that any way related to what...
There are no deadlines that I recall.
There aren't.
It says the capital...they have to do a capital improvement plan. That's their main charge. The capital improvement plan shall annually be submitted by the capital planning committee to the select board, and they shall hold a public hearing on the capital improvement plan. And that's the extent of it.
And any dates or schedules, you know, would be bylaws or policies or not?
Yes.
A lot of our discussion was contingent around this idea that the select board appoints these boards, and the select board can essentially tell these boards that it appoints that are accountable and advisory to the select board, we want it by X date. That was sort of our thought process.
All right. Hold on. Tom wanted to ask a question.
Yeah. I have an initial comment. But so, for those of you who don't see the document, there's 40 pages of document here put together. And so I would think that any members of the committee who walk into a local restaurant, people should stand up and give a hand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Because I know the other folks, there's some debate about some of the details of what things should be bylaws and what things should be in the charter. But overall, you know, I know you went through a lot of material and debated it and invited people in. Any idea of how many hours that you guys put into this?
Well, we met 20 times, and believe me, the meetings were never shorter than a couple hours, maybe the last one. Yeah. I mean, I think everybody in the committee would say it was a positive experience. They left with a better understanding of how our town government works, and I was happy to serve in that capacity.
We fought out articles and items, discussed them a great length, come to a lot of conclusions.
I would say that the discussion about what to do about the finance committee, the capital planning committee, and the permanent town building committee, whether they should be...and, well, those three, that was good for like three nights. And I would say that the audit committee was probably two. And I just, I found the language that I was fumbling around for earlier, Mr. Chairman, about the audit committee. The audit committee, the present language in the charter says that the audit committee shall review annual financial statements of the town financial offices, review the independent auditor's management recommendations, and provide advice and counsel to the select board and town manager. That's still in there. The part that we have clarified is to say that it serves in an oversight capacity and is not intended to be part of the town's operational or managerial decision-making process. It is not the duty of the committee to plan or conduct audits, or to determine that the financial statements and disclosures are complete and accurate. So, I mean, that's the part where we've sort of focused on what the audit committee does, given the fact that we've decided it should stay in place.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
And I just, I want to note that my vice chair had just pointed out to me that we got a letter from the then-chair of the select board to all boards and committee chairs. So it was the chair of the select board that sent the letter out to all boards and committee chairs. I guess we maybe could assume from that, that since it came from the board of selectmen, the chair of the select board, that select board would be told that they too could come before the...
We really did expect that you were part of that. It was not...
Nobody showed up, though. It's not because we didn't have things to say, as you can tell.
Yeah.
I obviously want to repeat what Tom said. I mean, I'm amazed at how thoroughly this was reviewed and, you know, at great detail. And just so the people at home who haven't seen the...
You should be pleased but not amazed, giving me makeup.
Okay. I'm pleased but not amazed. You know, and I think people at home ought to hear that there were really three categories of, and I think you pointed that out in your narrative, that there's a great deal of this that the original charter, or the charter as currently there, was transitioned. How do you get from the old government to the new government? And you just cleaned all that stuff up. And then there were the, I'll say, the administrative changes that you took care of, and then the substantive changes. And I think those are the three categories. And so my last question is, you know, how and over what time period do you envision seeing if it was all these changes or part of these changes being implemented? Do you see this as a one-shot deal taken before section by section, or...
Well, no. No. I mean, it's a... It's now in your lap. You have our report with what we're proposing as appropriate changes to the charter. Since none of them rise to the level of changes that would require a charter review commission, you decide what, if any, of these changes should go on the warrant for the, well, it would be the spring town meeting, when they would be taken up for a vote at the town meeting.
So I get that, that it's in our court. What I'm asking you is your committee's recommendations for, you know, you do those different sections differently, or you take, you know, take it section two, one?
I mean, you have to, you know, it would be a long warrant article. I mean, you have to decide which of these things you want to get into and which you don't. And I, speaking for my...
He's asking you, do we think that section three to five is going to be implemented? Once it's all approved, it's going to be implemented? Once it's all approved, is it going to be implemented all at one time, or we, we suggest that it be phased in?
We didn't, we didn't deal with that.
No, we didn't, and I, I, I don't see any problem with phasing it in all at once.
But I'll also point out, the charter was adopted as a, as a single document, I wouldn't have any problem submitting all the changes, say, here's what I came up with, anything that you don't approve, then, then there, take out or change.
And from, and from our perspective, we wanted to deliver this report to you, to give you enough time to go through your own deliberative process before presenting it to town meeting.
And I, you know, speaking for my committee members, without authorization, if you would like to have us meet jointly with you, after you've had a chance to chew on all of this, I, I'm sure we, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I mean, I-
I was going to say just a similar thing, if you have the items that you felt you also want us to still look at, there's no reason why we have to go out of business.
Larry wants to keep it-
We'll need reappointment as of December thirty-first, if the membership is going to continue.
I hear, I, I was just trying to get a sense of, you know, Larry, I, I hear you, we can do this as one lump sum, the problem is, you know, one section could, could kill the whole thing, and you'd hate to have that happen if, if people in town don't like one small section, and they like ninety percent of it, you know, and they feel strongly about it to, to kill it anyways.
I would suggest presenting it all as a single, in one meeting, but article by article, you know, or-
Bill, go ahead.
Paul, do you think that we need an audit committee? It just seems like it's redundant, they don't really have any-
No, I've been asked a question before, I think the function is needed, do we specifically need an audit committee, or can that function be done by the finance committee? It was, it was my preference, actually, that it be given to the finance committee, to give them actually a broader spectrum of what goes on with the finances, and the financial reports, and everything like that. So, the function is needed, yes, the actual committee-
It just seems redundant, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't want to, you know-
One of the, one of the things, Bill, that we discussed, you know, or at least that came up consistently, was that there is a, sort of, there's a lack of participation on these boards, and, you know, that weighed, I think, on us as we decided what edits, or suggestions, or recommendations would make, you know, we were making, based on the fact that it is hard to get citizens to participate on, on appointed boards and committees.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions for Attorney Martel, or?
I just want to, I did attend, Paul and I did attend many of their meetings, and I, and I do want to echo the sentiments, I think, having witnessed it firsthand, and, and I think, I did try, I think both Paul and I did try to convey, you know, how does it work in practice, you know, in the field, information, not, you know, how we think the world should be reorganized, and I, hopefully that was how our, our presentations came across to the committee, but, I do want to commend the work, I mean, you know, you see something that's a paragraph long, it really doesn't reflect how much thought and effort and back-and-forth went through, and they did, they went verse by verse through the charter, and, you know, doesn't need to be changed, doesn't it? If so, how, and, I really, you had the right group of people there on that committee, and I think both the institutional knowledge, and some of the newer perspectives, really added greatly to the process, and it was really a tremendous outcome and a great process, and I do want to, I want to offer my congratulations to that man, to the board for putting a good committee together.
And I just would make the point, and this is getting back to Mr. Foster's concern, is that we were appointed to present you with a report on how we sized up the charter, and I guess it's not unreasonable for us not to include input from the people to whom we are reporting, as, as one way of looking why, at why we didn't have joint meetings.
And it kind of occurred to me, just, you know, thinking about what, what Richard had said, that that was, I think, why it didn't seem unusual that the board was there, because we were planning on delivering you a report on what we think you should consider changing, knowing full well that you have all the authority in the world to put it on the warrant for the meeting.
So, I mean, now that you have our thoughts, I would urge you to run with them, and if you want us back, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'm impressed at how fast you did it, too, because this is something you could have been working on for years, and-
You did it in extra six months.
We did.
Still, I think it was done fairly quickly, so I thank you for that, and I think it's time for us to start working with it, and then possibly bringing them in, you know, to ask our questions further, as we get into it a little more depth.
That's fine. I'd like to just ask Mr. Landon if he'd like to come up and say any comments about
Pete Landon, Five Meadow Brook. Yes, I'm a dissenter in the one area of, this might be a good time to look at the former government, I, I don't have a bent towards the best former government, I, there's been so much movement in the market, and at one point, we talked about bringing in a consultant who had worked with many cities and towns, who's seen all the evolution of forms of government that we've seen in Western Mass, with Amherst, East Longmeadow, and others tweak their, or, or make substantial changes in their former government, so, it seemed to me that this was the time to recommend to you that it be included, that you would form an elected commission who has the power to look at changes in the former government, and that obviously is, you just heard the opposite, that it's not needed, so it's in your wisdom to pull that through. The other areas were, in long-range planning, the charter is, hits, hits on it four or five times in various committees, and it, it never identifies a lead dog to pull together a master plan for facilities, et cetera, and I thought this would be an opportunity to make the finance committee the lead dog on long-range planning, and that is another area I addressed. The other, is an area where I, I'm of the belief that the committees and boards that exist could be stronger and advisory, I think there's a sentiment that, there's a lot of wasted time in boards and committee work because of the selection process, not having people be vetted for their, for their ability to deal with the tasks, these are pretty sophisticated tasks in, in all of these boards and commissions, and that the output and the efficiency is not what it should be, and it's like an elephant in the room, that, I think, in some cases, the staff feels that it's a waste of their time, I can't speak for them, but I, I've been around, and that's my opinion. I think the way to address this, other than tightening up on the qualifications, is, you know, obviously, we're trying to market and get qualified people to step forward, and that's not easy, but, I think we've got some amazing documents at the finance department, and the town has put together, which are the GFOA-winning budget book and annual comprehensive financial report called the CAFR, just, and, the statistical matters in there are amazing, if you want to look at ten-year flows and trends, and if you talk to people on committees, particularly new ones, new members of the committees, that they're not aware, and the town annual report, if you read the reports of the chair, there's a lot of really good information in there, and, and I don't think, you know, we do any employee, we do training for people in staff jobs, I presume, and like any other business, but we do a lot of training in open meeting law, and, and amazing amount of training on open meeting law, and we should on the, how the town runs, that's, was another recommendation I put in there, so I was focusing not on the words in the charter, and the wordsmithing of the charter, but more on the flow of, of how the committees work, and, and their effectiveness. Probably the last item I had in here, it's been a lot of talk on the audit committee, so, where we ended up, there's a, you know, the audit committee has been fully informed as we went through this whole thing, there's only one sentence that we don't agree with in the recommendation of the committee, and I'm a, I was the chair of the audit committee at the time, can tell you how much influence I had within the, within the body, the, so the audit committee end result, there's one sentence that Ernie Welker, the current chair, can explain, has a problem with, and we're, we're aligning ourselves with GFOA, GFOA, since we did the charter, the original charter, and put the audit committee in in two thousand and four, has come up very strongly, and I sent to every one of you a copy of their recommendations on audit committee, which is just what Mark Gold said, you know, that process is included, and it's still included, so, there were proposals to deal with it otherwise. And the last item I had in there was, I wanted to include a very clear mandate of responsibility for debt management within the finance committee, right now, there's a lot of intimations about it, and I think it could be strengthened, but just inserting one sentence on debt management as far as the finance committee responsibilities, and that they would be responsible for, because I think the select board policy is excellent, requiring a master plan, it's called the town, in your, in your policy, town's master facility, equipment, and infrastructure plan is required, and we don't have one, I mean, you're talking about requirements, Mark, you know, alignment of schools and town with finances, this is another mandate within a policy that's not reflected in the charter structure, so, those were the, the thoughts, although I, I do agree with the body of, of the work that was done, as people have talked about, these are kind of what I thought I would be joining the committee to address.
Thank, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Landon? Pete, thanks so much, I appreciate you coming in. So, unless there's any discussion from the select board, I, I will say that I'll take it on myself as a, as, as the chair to start putting together a series of discussions within the board, to talk about how we're going to address these recommendations and act upon the recommendations, you know, it'll vary anything from, you know, you'll have to eat an elephant one section at a time, to setting up potentially a special town meeting that just deals with, with, with these issues, or whatever it is, but we'll go through it, kind of section by section, to make sure we know how we want to get this in, in front of the town, town folks, and again, I want to just reiterate to the members of the charter review committee that it was a ton of work, and I appreciate it, everybody in terms of the going section by section and taking a look at it, so thank you very much. So, our next, we're going to go back, actually, we've got some people here, and I did skip over some old business, but I want to get the bulk of the group done here, it was the delegation of change order authority that the select board's been dealing with, with the permanent building committee, and Mr. Foster was delegated as our representative to work with the permanent building committee, and he's now come up with a recommendation for the, for the select board, so, Mr. Foster, I'm going to turn it over to you to, kind of review your, your proposal for us, and since this is the second or third time we've looked at it, hopefully you can take some action on it tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. We, basically, I, I cleansed the document a little bit, I took some, some words out at, at, at my leisure, and at my liberty, basically, the, the one thing came down was delegation of authority, and we've had some other discussion here tonight, which may actually come back and impact this policy, but it is a policy, so it can be changed at any time. Originally presented to the select board, I believe, Mark, you had a draft policy that stated that the five percent factor, and that was a starting place, and then the committee came back with higher factors, and the town manager higher factors, and then we had discussion at, at this meeting, I think I had subsequent discussions with the chair offline, and came back and met with the chair of the building committee, and attended a couple of meetings, and briefed the group, and came down to, for the approval on change orders for full authority, was the town manager has full authority for one dollar up to ten thousand dollars, the town manager in, in collaboration with the Long Meadow Building Committee has authority, joined authority from ten thousand one to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and twenty-five thousand and up would revert back to the, with recommendations from the town manager and the LBC, would recommend back up to select board. I must add that this, this is just a starting place, we're not quite sure where it's going to go, but this, I, I was able to gain confidence from the building committee that they were willing to drop the levels back down, and we'd go in at this point and see how it worked. There's discussion on back and forth, more relative, there's a twenty million dollar contract at point, and the, the chair of the building committee's expression, like, twenty-five thousand dollars is nothing, and she's absolutely correct on that particular contract, but, keep in mind, that's not, that's not a one-time sole authority, this is, this is, bites, they can do twenty, they could do fifty, sixty change orders at twenty-five thousand dollars, so it could end up to be a sizable amount of money, and the envisionment that I had, and I'm not sure that we have fully communicated that, and I'm not sure that the role and function is fully balanced in for the building committee, is that they would be dealing with projects that weren't the twenty million dollar class, they may be down into the four, five, and six hundred thousand dollar projects, along with the town manager, right now, the town manager has authority, without any board approval, I'll talk to anybody, for a hundred thousand dollar contract and implement a ten thousand dollar change order. Cumulatively, with the town manager and the chair, they would have authority for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract with, with absolutely zero communication, except for briefing. So, I think each, each side gave a little, and, and each side is, is willing to enter into the agreement to see how it works, and let's, let's put it out and see if we have a problem. It's a policy, it, it can be, it can be changed overnight in this room, again, it doesn't have to go to town meetings, it's approved by the select board. Mary Beth, do you have anything you'd like to add, Mark?
No, I think, I think the consensus at our meeting, our last building committee meeting, was that, you know, since every change order ultimately has come to you, because they've been so significant, that the, and that the chair certainly has indicated a desire for the building committee to give very regular reports to you at your meetings, I think that we had a general agreement that it almost didn't matter, because anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, we would be discussing with you anyway, and, and as Mark said, you know, this is, this is a new committee, we're involved in two major projects right now, and everyone is sort of, the select board, the committee, the town manager, with the issues that have arisen, is sort of feeling our way through this, and, and I think all of us just have to have patience with one another, and, and certainly trust that everyone's working in the best interest of the town residents.
Thank you. So, Mr. Foster, is this, are you prepared to make this as a motion, to accept this policy?
Yeah, I have one more comment that I'd like to make before I present it as a motion. I've had the opportunity, I think, to attend three meetings, and I can testify to you at this point, this is likely one of the best decisions that this board ever made in, in cooperation with the town manager, was the establishing, establishment of this group. This group, it's unbelievable, the foresight and energies being put in, and, and the overview that's already being very apparent, and we understand that's only going to grow, I think, I think it's likely, Stephen, I don't know if you agree, but I think this is likely one of the best things that we've ever done.
I think, Richard, I, I do agree, and I think, you know, notwithstanding any perception of staff, you know, not valuing the work of volunteers, I think one of the things that I think is the strength of the building committee is continuity, and the more things they deal with, the better they get at the things they're dealing with, and they are, to, to be on the committee, you had, you did, did have to have certain, meet certain criteria, and I think, Richard, you'll, you'll, I think you'll back me up in saying that the fact that they come from those backgrounds that, that have, that are related to generally the areas within their purview, it's added a great deal of insight, and, you know, I think, efficiency to the work of the group, so I, I agree with you, I think they're, it's a good group to work with, and they're certainly, they, they certainly challenge us, the designers, the contractors, the OPMs, but that's what you need, you need to have people who understand what they're talking about, asking good detailed questions, to make sure that we are getting the best work product we can, and, and I think that that's one of the reasons why, you know, every project is already limited before we've even had a meeting about it, by the scope of work presented in the town meeting article, and the amount of money appropriated for that purpose, so even within the confines of this policy, it's still limited in what we could actually do, and I think that, I know that the, that the permanent building committee has town meeting voters and residents- know that the, that the permanent building committee, as town meeting voters and residents, are going to look at what is, what are the limitations we start out with, and, you know, stay within those at a minimum.
Okay, I'd like to present a motion that we adopt the delegation of change order authority that town manager and town along middle building committee has submitted.
Second, motion made by Mr. Foster, and seconded by Mr. Lucuso. Is there any other, are there any other comments? Hearing no other comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The vote is 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foster, and thanks to...
Yeah, one, one quick comment, Mark, too, I failed to make. The, the unique thing about this group, Stephen tiptoed on it, they're not political, and they're not afraid to ask, ask the tough questions. And that's what's refreshing. There's, they're not timid by any means. So, I think it's going to be a real benefit to our community.
That's great. Marie?
I'd like to comment also, what was said, I think, by the town manager about qualifications required to be on the committee. And I think that's sort of brought up what the charter committee was saying. I think now the bylaws, and maybe we should start requiring more qualifications when we look at appointment, and some of these committees and boards that require really some heavy-duty work, that's we're going to be doing in the future. So, what we do with the building committee, we might want to look to consider in the future with other boards and committees.
Marie, I absolutely agree with you. The issue is, don't, don't paint yourself into a corner, because if you require an engineer and an architect, and you can't get an engineer and architect, you end up with one or two people.
And a lot of times, you don't have a lot of people volunteer.
So, sometimes you want good people who can think straight and understand the situation. And as much as you, you know, prefer to have an engineer and an architect, sometimes it doesn't happen.
Yeah, but sometimes if you don't ask for it, you don't get it, too. And this time we, we did, and I think it works.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine.
When we consider our charter, if we, the changes that we are looking at the charter, we should also look at our changes in our policies and bylaws.
Absolutely. But there's preferences, and then there's requirements. Stephen?
And this kind of ties together a few previous agenda items. One of the things I did suggest during the process is, I do think there needs to be more of an omnibus review of our boards and committees. I don't think every committee needs to have qualifications to serve. I just think the more detailed specialized subject matter that the committee deals with, the more you should at least try to have people with qualifications, the more technical in nature, I guess, for, I'm saying it differently. But I think overall, a look at how many boards and committees does the town have? What are their functions? Are the, are the boards and committees, as presently constituted, doing those functions? Are they doing more than those functions? How are they authorized by bylaw, like quorums, things like that? A question came up of the permanent building committee, and how are they supposed to be operating, and, not permanent building committee, sorry, the demolition delay committee. And I think there's, if we really did an analysis of it, I'm sure there are some gaps between the policies and bylaws, for more than a few of the boards and committees that are put together by select board policy, that kind of flowed out there, kind of unregulated. I think, you know, could we consolidate? Do we need to have more specializations, things like that? But I think, at some point, because I think if people, and I also think that if you did it as a way to economize, you would get maybe, maybe volunteers who were more willing to do this, versus spending a lot of time in meetings talking about 100 things, you know what I'm saying? So, I just want to put, it was not a charter review committee recommendation, because it didn't really fall in the charter. But that was something that I did note in those meetings. I think the select boards should, should get some thought, too.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I'd like to move to our next agenda item, which is the North Interceptor update. My understanding is that we've got the DPW here also, I guess he's a consultant, Dave Prickett, who's done some work on this. Again, just as a, as a lead-in, just let people know that the, there's, were you going to be showing some pictures up on the screen here?
Are you just going to pass out?
I've already passed this one.
Okay.
Yeah, we already got the document. I just want the people at home to understand that the North Interceptor is a sewer line. It's a major sewer line, and right now, it runs behind the houses that are in the, I guess it's the northwest corner of the, the town, which is west of Long Meadow Street, kind of where King Philip Stockade is, and back there, and then runs down along Interstate 91. And people who drive up Interstate 91, if you really look in the fall, when there are no leaves on the trees, you can see the precariously mounted stormwater, storm sewer interceptor. It's not water, it's storm sewer interceptor that runs down there. And the, the issue has been, because after Route 91 was built, apparently there's very limited, if any, access at all to that line by the town, based on what our rights are for the residents who live on some of those streets. And I think the streets are Western Drive and Severn Street. And so, tonight, we're just going to talk about the DPW analysis of that. So, I'll, Maria, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mark. So, in previous meetings, you guys have told me that you'd like to see or be involved in decisions early on in the project. And tonight falls under that category. Before I got here, my predecessor was working on a way to remedy the existing system. Dave is going to go through a little bit of what that looked like, and then the cost of that, and then maybe an alternative that we came up in, we think could possibly be significantly cheaper. And that's, that's really what drove this conversation, is can we live with what the previous analysis said, and, or do we want to look at other options? And that's what we're going to do. Can you take over from there?
Yep, I can take over from there. Mark, Mark did a good job doing the introduction for me. So, I'm Dave Prickett with DPC Engineering, resident of 22 Northfield Road. As Mark alluded to in the introduction, Long Meadow's sewer system is relatively unique. So, when it was built decades ago, we were fortunate enough that pipes were built along these river valleys, or as they call them in Long Meadow, and Hoyoke, the dingles. And it was great, because we didn't need a lot of pump stations to get the flow from point A to point B. But from a preventative maintenance standpoint, and I should note that Pete Thurber has joined this evening, also with DPW, and with me is James Rivers in the back in the bleachers to help out with the AV. Access for preventative maintenance, or reactive maintenance, is extremely difficult. So, this section of the North Interceptor sewer, as Mark said, serves the northwest corner of the town. It's tough to get to. If you take a look at the third page of your handout, there's some photos in here that show this elevated section of piping. So, somehow, when this was constructed, the contractor literally constructed a section of piping, an extended section of piping on stilts. It's amazing that this hasn't physically collapsed, whether it be from trees falling in the October 2011 snowstorm, or from erosion and things that can happen. It's a very steep area, and you can see from these photos, which were taken early this spring, it's not hard to miss. It is extremely hard to get to, though. Even just to walk down to the photo in the top right there was challenging. We were actually out here as part of an evaluation of your entire collection system this spring. One of the property owners had been working on some renovations in the back with the property. Some material had inadvertently been dropped down the slope, which resulted in Pete getting to do some work with the crew to remedy, remedy those issues. So, the driver here is really, can't get to it, how do we deal with it long-term? So, there's three alternatives. And the first one is we do nothing. That's always, the do, the do-nothing alternative always has to be presented, because the cost from a capital standpoint is zero. But from, from the standpoint of what might happen, down the road from being able to do nothing could be challenging. Those that remember Will Meadowbrook and the consent order decades ago, that's what can happen from the do-nothing alternative. The second alternative, and Mario alluded a little bit, in your handout, you'll see a figure two. It's the fourth page in the handout. The initial concept for this portion of the North Interceptor, and this just deals with an initial northernmost section of the project, actually had the sewer being reconstructed outside of the easement, being constructed, reversing the sewer going east on Western Drive, the entire length of Severn Street, back down to the Interceptor. So, a couple of things that stand out with that alternative, we'll touch on in a second, is cost. So, we reverse the pipe, we end up with a section of pipe in Severn Street that's 25 feet deep. For those of you that may have seen construction in Long Meadow, where we have the, the sand soils on top of the marine clay, trying to deal with groundwater in 25-foot-deep soils in Long Meadow is, needless to say, very challenging. So, that shouldn't be taken lightly. That alternative would also include at least two, if not three, of the residents either needing grinder pumps, instead of their current gravity service, which goes out the backyard, or, or potentially having the plumbing either reversed through the house, or redirected all the way around the house. So, from that standpoint, you know, when you already have sewer service as a resident, a change to that, either through kind of how you live your life and/or what your landscaping might look like now versus afterwards, those can be challenging conversations to have as a wastewater utility. The second alternative, and James is going to flip to the next page, is something that we, we talked to DPW, with DPW, about over the past few months. We collected data on the entire North Interceptor this spring, before all the weeds were out of control. We did sonar testing on all the pipes. That wasn't a technology that was available to us two, three, or even five years ago. That sonar testing gave us qualitative information and data on the, the condition of the pipes along that. And there were several sections where the pipe, albeit old and tough to get to, was in good shape. So, we started to rethink the drivers. Picture this, we have 265,000 feet of pipe, sewer pipe in Long Meadow, and 15% to 20% of the pipe is in these easements. So, if we take a potentially conservative approach by redirecting pipes out of easements and/or constructing pump stations, you can imagine, as we amplify those costs from this one small area to dozens, if not, you know, close to 100 areas where we have to deal with this, costs could get out of control. So, the alternative that, that Pete and Mario and the team came up with was, right now, the sewer is down over the slope, as we saw. So, a potential concept would be working with the homeowners to maintain their current sewer service configuration, getting the pipe up above the top of the slope. There are relatively, I would call relatively expansive backyards for these homes in between 91 and the physical buildings, far away from the confines of either the existing building and/or additions that homeowners might put on over time. We think that this might provide the town with a more cost-effective alternative, as well as improve access for the resources that you have. And we're fortunate enough to have a vector truck in Long Meadow, and that's a great resource in terms of preventative maintenance. So, this alternative keeps things, excuse me, parallel to the existing Interceptor sewer. And when we get down towards Hillcrest, we have to get back down the slope and connect to that existing pipe. So, go ahead.
Is, is there any way homeowners, homeowners would see this as a, a property improvement? You know, if there was this put in, you know, in terms of, would it extend their yard, or the flat area their lodge would be? Any kind of, you know, could we fill in some areas that would make it appealing to homeowners?
I like how you think, in terms of the cell. I think in reality, the likelihood that any property is bettered from a monetary standpoint would be minimal in my experiences. With that said, if you're in these backyards, and we walked it together, there's a lot of mature trees, but it's not forested, per se, on the slope. So, I think we can kind of navigate a path through there that would obviously be a short-term construction impact, but I don't believe would present a long-term, any long-term negative benefit, detriments relative to condition or property, or value of property. Certainly, the town, if you consider this alternative, would have to consider a relatively extensive number of, you know, easement negotiations. That would be an early decision that would need to be made. So, that's the downside with this alternative, is it requires a lot of easements.
Would it be wise to purchase some of the properties as they turn over? Would that make this an easier project to work with? If you actually owned some of the properties at the edge?
I probably shouldn't comment from a financial standpoint. I don't believe that, that we would need to purchase any properties, or take those out of the net plan list. I think that these would be, you know, easements that are often negotiated, and the town has a strong track record of, of doing this with council and other circumstances.
And then the other question is, I understand that this is sand cliffs, and they're roading as we go along. Is this a solution that's going to be good for the next 30, 50 years? And it's something we're going to have to face again?
I think getting the pipes off the slopes is about as good a solution as we can have. Having them above allows us to stabilize the soils, have the grass and the vegetation restored to its original condition. You know, truth be told, you know, some of these properties, you know, leaves are, find their way down the slope in the fall, as they do in many places in town. I don't think that will really change, but it certainly will make the conditions better, short-term and long-term with that. We can't solve every problem with the North Interceptor. You can imagine along that stretch, if you've ever taken a walk back through there, or just driven along 91. I mean, the terrain is, is pretty awful. There's two or three siphons along that way. What we're really trying to do is, how can we make it better to, you know, to foster the proactive maintenance, positioning manholes where vector trucks can get to it, and giving them nice, long, straight runs to flush those periodically. That's, that's really what we're focused on here. And these are, these are great questions. It's good to hear, kind of, you all have a background about this. And I know this goes back a little ways as well, so.
Do you have any other presentations, Dave?
Just, just real quick, on the order of magnitude on the cost, obviously, it's, it's early in a, kind of a planning phase evaluation, Mark, but orders of magnitude to physically reroute the pipe up Western, down Severn, back down through the woods, you're looking at at least three, three and a half million dollars for that alternative. For this alternative that we mentioned in the backyards, because there's no pavement restoration, your major costs are really easement acquisition, temporary construction measures to minimize impacts to the properties, you're looking at a little over a million dollars. So, order of magnitude, this alternative or this concept is, you know, a third of what the, the other alternative it is. And as your engineer and advisor, and as a resident, I think, you know, we ought to be prudent. Where we can save money, we have a lot of financial burdens in town. This one, to me, makes sense.
I guess the, the questions I would ask go back to the, is it absolutely impossible, or is it just costly, to try to stabilize the pipe where it is?
It's, I believe it's impossible to stabilize the elevated section of piping. It's on a slope that's probably one-on-one. I don't know how you really get that down into the soil, make that safe. Stabilizing easements in Long Meadow is, is brutal. Some other towns, where you have a nice gravelly till, you can pack it in there, and you can stabilize the, the bank. But when you have this sugar sand on top of the clay, I mean, it's almost impossible to keep this from running. And I'm sure we could probably all attest areas where we've had to do some cross-country work, and, you know, and seen it be challenging for a few years after construction. So, I believe the short answer is no, for the part that's worst.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just had a vision of, you know, go down 25 or 30 feet, and put in anchors down to below, down to when you hit something that's solid, you know, and, and just build it up. So, you're literally, let the, let the road, let the hill collapse around the pipe, but the pipe's going to stand there while everything...
It could, it could be done. My fear is that every tree we cut on that slope makes it that much more challenging to stabilize it over time.
And, and your vision is that the, if, that the, what I'll call backyard easements, that's all buried pipe, then?
That'd all be buried pipe. And they're only talking six or eight feet deep, you know.
And it's still below the, it's, so, so, the cell to the homeowners are, you know, you're going to flush your toilets, just like you always have, and you're not going to put in grinders, and have to deal with trying to move your sewer, sewage uphill. It's still downhill.
If there's heat properties there, the cell is really easy for three or four of them, because having a grinder pump, or reroute and pipe through your basement, or around your yard, isn't super desirable. For the few that are on kind of the southern side, they already have service out to Severn.
Right.
So, for them, the carrot is a little less obvious.
That's what I was going to ask, is how, it looks like, well, there's two or three properties that would have to reverse their plumbing?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the first two that are entirely on Severn, on the north side, the northernmost, 18 and 32, and then potentially one of the ones on Western Drive. And there's three there.
But, but why would they have to? Couldn't it still go out to Severn, and then connect back the way it does now?
Well, the, the couple of them.
The way, the yellow, the yellow pipe comes over and goes, it'll, it'll reconnect back up.
For those four up top, Mark, they, they would continue to be, they could continue to be served out Severn.
Right.
The two or three northernmost properties, that's where the, the change would come.
Right, okay. Marie?
Do we know how, how much erosion we're getting per year on that north end?
I don't. As we stood at the top of the hill, I'd say it's fair to say that anytime the surface is disrupted to, to any degree, there's short-term impacts. But I don't know in my position to quantify that.
And is, when we go to bury this, I mean, we're going to destabilize the cliff even
more? more?
We're going to do all the work above the top of the cliff. So you'd be up, up in the backyards. I mean, it's not perfectly flat, but it's a gentle slope. And then once you get to the edge, it is.
Yeah, because they just cut it to make 91.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
What's the timetable?
So if we like this option, we'd start working on design. We certainly, we need to get a praiser, review appraisers involved and figure out the value of those easements, permanent. I'd like to try to make it work for Springtown meeting.
For a total package approval or design?
Right, for the money, and then construction could happen, oh, God, I don't know, maybe the following year, by the time we're.
Next fall or the following spring.
By the time we bid it and start to work.
How does the cost of this compare with other, you know, you're saying a million-plus kind of thing, Dave? You know, compared to some of the other sewage projects that we have? I mean, is this, you know, twice the, what other proj, and I'm just trying to say in terms of priorities and, and, and spending on this thing?
I think from a, a cost-per-foot standpoint, the subtotal was just under $700,000 before you start adding in all the soft costs of easements and legal and engineering and contingency. I believe that's on the low side relative to an interceptor. I think bang for the buck, you know, thinking back to the, whatever it was, '08 study that we had worked on, you know, with former hats, this was always one of the, the most brightly lit needs in the collection system. So I think return on investment, you know, sewer's hard, Mark, to, to show a return.
But you're not redoing any streets, as you indicated. This is all.
No, from a construction standpoint, you're probably looking at two to three works, weeks of work. And, you know, the real work is all up front, working with the property owners and Stephen and Town Council and yourselves to make sure everybody's bought into the approach before you pull the trigger.
I just wondered about, because, you know, I know the erosion in that area is, is pretty significant. And, you know, looking at the amount of rainstorms, you know, look to be increasing the next few years, could we put, if we did this for homeowners, could we put a non-invasive species that would help stabilize that erosion problem there? Could, could that be part of our thing that we offer as a town, to the residents?
I suspect if the town wanted to add that as an element to the project, I mean, you have a nice exposure on that bank to good sunlight for, you know, germination and other things. It, it couldn't hurt.
I think you need more than that. You need riprap, you know, rock and wire and everything. We wouldn't see it, but.
The thing to be mindful of is that you don't have to go, when you think of like air rights, you don't have to go too far into this, we're into this, the highway layout, the state highway layout.
Oh, you're right there. That red line on the bottom of the page is the edge of the private properties and the DOT right-of-way.
Right, so we'd be into this DOT lands before too long, and I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, the slope, I, I think when, like on Will Meadow, they do the, the landscape netting and things like that, and you can see that that's held up pretty well. You know, certainly on, up to that right-of-way line, the town, or even maybe beyond, if we worked with DOT, you'd be trying to do something like that. I think the big thing is, step one is making sure that we, that there's consensus that this is the approach to work on. Obviously, what would be required is the willingness to go forward with the eminent domain taking of the permanent easements, which isn't taking the property in fee, just taking an easement over it, the same way you would do a roadway or, or something like that. And I think, and I, I can't remember if you guys built in back of the envelope, easement costs into this, or is this just the work?
No, we did.
Good.
Pretty, pretty conservative ones.
Correct. And then the, the other alternative one, does that include that costs homeowners would bear by doing the grinder pumps and the, and the repiping?
It was pretty comprehensive in terms of pipe and pumps and infrastructure. There were some limited easements needed on that first alternative closer down to the siphon on the south side, too. We tried to keep things as apples-to-apples as we could as a baseline.
Couldn't you get some federal monies here? I mean, can't you make the argument that they caused some of this, building the highway?
Make any argument you want to, but I don't know if we're going to pay it for.
Yeah, not, not in a time that, I mean, I think, I think the timeliness of this makes it that, you know, we have to, you know, go for, we can certainly pursue that, but usually low-interest loans or something like that, I don't know, we can.
I suspect with the town's credit that you could probably do things on your own as well as you could to run the program.
And much, and much more quickly than it would take to have the federal government.
The challenge with anything on the slope, just anecdotally, is that we, we could potentially do more harm by doing something intrusive on the slope. I think a vegetative approach by foot, if anything, is the most prudent and guarantees, if you will, if you can use that word, the least amount of long-term impacts. But it could be improved, for sure.
Mario?
I agree with Bill. I think you should reach out to our delegation in Boston and see what grants might be available for something like this, because it was the cutting of the 91, number one. Number two is, you've got a sewer pipe that can burst and really mess up 91 if it doesn't get taken care of.
It actually came on the other side of the, of the sewer.
Yeah.
So currently is, the, the town has the easements where the pipe currently is? Those are all, is that, that's all private land that it's on?
I don't.
Should I not ask that question?
Sort of, maybe. You can see the, the yellow line kind of meanders back and forth. We've not investigated.
That, this, this pipe pre, has been there a long time.
This pipe's been there for a while, yeah.
We've looked, found nothing yet.
You, you have some easements, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few, yeah, there's, but the majority of that.
So even our access to the current pipe is questionable.
Limited, yep.
Agreed.
Got it. Sorry I asked.
Are you looking for a vote of, or just a sway of confidence?
I don't think this is a, is a voting issue. I think it's a sense of the board move forward with the, with this, with, you know, what I'll call option two, which is the replacement up in the backyards as opposed to option one, which was down Severn Street, which was the, what we originally saw. And I, I think like any other water sewer project, it's up to the DPW to time this with their other projects and come back to the, the select board and, and, you know, whatever it is, and say, we want to put this in our capital plan for the next year and paid for by the sewer, sewer stabiliz, or, you know, not stabilization fund, but the, the sewer fund. So it's not really a tax item.
Well, I mean, I guess what I would, what I would say is, I think if the board wanted memorialize in the form of like an endorsement, like we endorse alternative two, because there's a lot of expense in design and hiring appraisers, like Mario said, and all that other stuff to pursue this alternative, and it's not the same type of design for alternative one, we don't, we're not really in the situation where we can say, ah, just keep letting play, both play out and see where we get, because then we're going to start spending some good money after bad. Whereas if the board does think that this makes a lot of sense, then.
I don't think anybody's saying let them both play out. I mean, it's pretty clear, we, we've got to give the DPW guidance in one direction or the other. That's all I'm saying. But I don't think we're telling you what the timing needs to be, we're not telling you how to do the project.
No, all we're saying is just endorsing the approach.
No, I endorse alternative two. Richard, how do you feel?
Number two?
Yeah, I think the sense of, I don't know, yeah, I think the sense is pretty unanimous that the, that maybe Jack even just captured that, it was an unanimous sense of the board, that, that the DPW proceed with, you know, the north, north slope interceptor that would be, that would be in the, if you will, moved up to the top of the, of the top of the north slope there.
And save two and a half million dollars.
Well, hopefully saving a bunch of money.
I'm not even concerned so much with the money, I'm concerned about the fact that you're saying that it's just as good as the alternative. And actually, there's less mechanical equipment, which makes it very advantageous for us in the future years. You know, we were under the impression before that you could not use this slope. So basically, the question I'm bringing before is, is new information in that regard.
So we're not using the slope, just, I don't want to split hairs with you.
No, you could not use this routing. We were told before, the only routing was actually the yellow one, to take it on up and with the grinders and everything else.
So we are going to be in people's backyards?
Yeah.
And I know that's abundantly clear, I just, that was really where we needed you guys to kind of say, yeah, we think it's worth it.
But we're talking about an eight-foot-wide kind of path and, and, you know, if somebody's swing set's there, sorry, we're going to move the swing set. And if somebody's swimming pool's there, that's a real problem, but.
We just went through this next door to your house. And these easements are necessary to maintain our infrastructure. And I know they're sometimes, you know, every 50 years, all of a sudden, whoever happens to have the house, their lives get disrupted, but everyone's life gets disrupted if we're not able to do projects like this.
The issue is, we're not going down their front yard, turn up their driveway, upsetting there's, like I said, the way they dispose of their sewage and any of that stuff, so.
The year, a year after the project is done, you'll hardly even know that we were ever there, if you didn't know.
Well, maybe some trees gone and a strip of new grass.
Well, you'll keep us informed as we go along if there runs into some bumps.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot, Dave. Thanks, Mario. Okay. That, actually, it's nine o'clock. That concludes our, our formal session agenda. Stephen, you still didn't have something for us in executive session, right? Or you're not ready with that yet?
I could, I could, maybe just a few minutes, not, not to, not to turn up in session.
Okay, because we do have an, an update on a couple of non-union negotiations. So, you know, does anybody have any, any committee reports or any subcommittee reports that they just want to talk about? No, we don't? Okay, so I'd like to entertain a, a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation with non-union personnel.
Moved.
Not to return to executive session.
Moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lowe. We need a roll call vote, Jackie.
Richard?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Our next meeting again is, is Monday, November 5th, and we do have, again, there's, early voting starts before that. I encourage, and a, and a town meeting tomorrow night, so I encourage everybody to come to tomorrow night's town meeting and to show up to vote on November 6th, or tune in here November 5th. Thank you very much, we'll see you at the next meeting.